So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the October 17th, 2023, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Joan Jones if she would give us an invocation, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. Let us pray. Oh, was, oh wise God, in your presence we come this morning acknowledging your sovereignty. We come this morning, God, giving thanks for these who now sit before us to do the business and proclaim that which needs to be done for this county. We ask, God, that those who will come forth to present information and to share, that there would be a spirit of cooperation and collaboration, that in this place, the environment, would be one of humility, that those who now, who will come and stand in this place, will come with the sense of belonging and the sense of relationship. God, we pray on those who are the commissioners and those who have been selected, elected, and approved. Now, God, we ask that all that is done in this space, in this appointed time, will be done according to the Spirit of our risen Lord and Savior, and we ask this in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen. I appoint the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you, Pastor Jones. And Pastor Jones comes to us today from St. Mannens United Methodist Church in Chesapeake Beach.
I have a new home now.
Oh, yes, you do. That's right. You retired, right?
I retired, but I am being serving beyond retirement in Carter's United Methodist Church in Friendship.
Ah, very good. Thank you. And that brings us to approving the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
Move to approve, Mr. President?
Select.
Have a motion in a second that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I have several public service announcements this morning, and unfortunately, I have to start with condolences that we lost two great citizens in Calver County recently. Tommy Brady, who grew up here in Prince Frederick and was very active in the fire service. He was actually the first fire chief of the Huntington Volunteer Fire Department when it was established. He also served many, many years at the Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department and had a short stint at the Prince Frederick Volunteer Rescue Squad. So, we want to extend our sincere condolences to his family. And also, we lost Anthony DeStelfano, sorry, Tony. Tony was very active, served on our Economic Development Committee, owned a tax depot up in Owings, and unfortunately, passed away also, and we want to send our sincere condolences to his family. Also, today's a busy day for announcements. This month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Each year in the United States, approximately 225,000 women are diagnosed with breast cancer, and 42,000 women die from the disease. So, we just want to encourage everyone out there to make sure you take protective, proactive steps to take care of yourselves. Also, last week, we celebrated the 248th birthday of the U.S. Navy. The Continental Congress established what is now the U.S. Navy on October 13th, 1775. And the Navy's been very important part of Calver County, with the work center and the base down at Lexington Park, so we want to wish them a happy birthday. And tonight, today, at 4:00 PM at the Southern Community Center, there'll be a Calver County Election Board public meeting to talk about a proposed change in precincts. So, anybody that has interest, you can attend that meeting. You can also go onto the Calver County Maryland Gov. Elections website for more information. And the election board is also going to accept public comment until October 27th. So, that day, that meeting is today, 4:00 PM, at the Southern Community Center. Also, tonight, we're going to have a joint meeting with our local elected delegation to talk about proposed legislation for the upcoming legislative session. That's at 7:00 PM at the Harriet Brown Center on Dares Beach Road. You can also, it'll be livestreamed, and we will take public comment. You can call in or attend in person. So, tonight's the first time that we've done that, at least since I've been on the board, to allow the public to come in and hear. We also took public requests for legislation, so all that'll be presented tonight to the delegation. So, as I said, if you have interest, that meeting is at 7:00 PM at the HEB, or you can tune in via Zoom. And that concludes all the public announcements I had today. And that, yes. And today, we have to cert, the Calver County Board of Commissioners also serves the Calver County Board of Health, and today is the time when we have to have our annual public hearing, and that is going to be with Dr. Folsom from the Department of Health. Good morning, Dr. Folsom.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good morning.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
It's a pleasure.
She's energetic.
Yes.
Always. You can't have four kids and not be energetic. Just doesn't work.
Before you start, we do need a motion to convene as the Board of Health. Thank you, Vice President Hart.
Mr. President, I move we recess the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and convene a meeting as the Calver County Board of Health.
I have a motion in a second that we recess the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a meeting of the Calver County Board of Health. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, you can continue.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me. And Dr. Polsky is on a well-deserved vacation, so I appreciate the time to present to you. This will be a little less data-heavy than Dr. Polsky's typical slide deck, but I did want to outline some of the things that are already ongoing in the county, and I'll get to the agenda here. So, here's the outline. We're going to talk about some infectious diseases as we enter into the fall and winter seasons. I'd like to highlight what's going on currently in the county for diabetes, obesity, tobacco, and vaping, and then I'll highlight one of our diversity and minority health initiatives that we have going on in the county. Unlike Dr. Polsky, who highlights travels, I'm going to highlight my dogs. I have six of them, so bear with me, but this is Bailey. She's our old lady. She's been rescued from St. Mary's County, and she rolls the roost. I want to talk a little bit about influenza and vaccinations. So, influenza, I want to remind everyone typically presents as an upper respiratory or a lung condition, so most commonly, it's presents as a cough, shortness of breath, fatigue, fever, body aches, and occasionally GI symptoms, although that's not generally the most common presentation. Treatment can be initiated with medications. Also, we can reduce the likelihood of severe disease with vaccinations to prevent those people from landing in the hospital. I did want to highlight, as of this slide deck, we had done 575 influenza vaccinations to youth at the public school system through our continued collaboration. This is at no cost to families through the Vaccines for Children program. As of this morning, our DSR nurse told me that it's up to 839 vaccinations, so we'll roll into our second round next week through all the public schools and some of the non-public schools. We also provide back-to-school vaccines for meningitis.
Dr. Fols.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Commissioner Grasso has a question.
Yes. You're getting ready to get to what my question is. Is HPV vaccine a requirement?
It's not a requirement. It's an optional vaccine. The ones that are requirements up there, the very first meningitis and tetanus and diphtheria are requirements
Okay.
for the school system, and we provide those through our back-to-school clinics that are held in August and September.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So, those, you can see there, the, and that's 839 vaccines for the kiddos at this point in time. I would like to highlight that we are going to be doing a drive-through vaccination clinic at 141 Schooner Lane where we did a lot of the COVID vaccinations. This is going to be for flu vaccines only. It will be on November the 4th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So, if you're at Hollowing Point Park and playing a sport, come on over. I know my husband and my son will be. It's drive-through, and the registration will be live after this Saturday. So, our new registration system goes live two weeks in advance of the actual clinic. All ages six months and above are welcome. All vaccines are approved for the flu vaccine six months and above. There will be the high-dose vaccines as well. So, for people who are older, who would like to take advantage of the high-dose vaccine, that will also be available, and there will be no out-of-pocket costs. The graph that I put there on the right is to highlight that we generally follow flu trends in this country on an annual basis starting in October. So, it's a very weird sort of calendar, but if you look here, the upslope is through the fall and winter of last year, and then you see a downtrend through the spring and through the summer of last year, and then we've just started our newest season with October. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about RSV. This is Respiratory Syncytial Virus. This is a confusing one for some because it's a new vaccination that's been approved for both the youngest and the oldest in our population. It does land a lot of kids and a lot of older folks in the hospital, so this is why they've now approved this vaccination. For younger children, younger than five years of age, we can see somewhere upwards of 80,000 hospitalizations every single year for RSV, and for people 65 and over, it can be almost double that. Babies who are eligible would be anybody who's eight months or less going into their first RSV season. The problem is, and I wanted to highlight this, supply is not very robust at this point for this vaccine for the children, and insurance coverage is not very good. So, at this point in time, we're looking at potentially not being able to have it for a large swath of the age group at this point. The good news is, the older folks have availability for this. So, that one is provided in pharmacies and doctors' offices, and that doesn't seem to be limited as much as for the younger kiddos. Okay? So, that one is a shared decision-making choice with your doctor, or your nurse practitioner, or your PA, and then you can make a decision about whether or not you want to get that as an adult, especially if somebody has a medical condition that would cause worsening symptoms from RSV pneumonia, or if they're around, you know, my parents watch my nephew and niece every day, and so if they're around kids regularly, they're bringing home germs from school, maybe that's a good solution, too, to have the vaccine for those folks.
Is that covered by insurance?
It should be covered by insurance. Dory's our lab bird dog mix. She's 11 years old. She was rescued from my rescue here in the county. And of course, I have to talk a little bit about COVID. Everybody knows that. COVID infections are still present in our community. I'll show a graph and a slide, a further slide, but over the course of the summer, testing and positivity did increase. We did see lower overall hospitalization and death rates because we have early access to vaccination and treatments. Unfortunately, the folks who do land in the hospital and/or pass away, we do look at their records for things like vaccination, and many of them were not up to date or were unvaccinated. It doesn't mean that it's all the time, but we do, we're cognizant of that when we're looking at that information. Just a reminder that symptoms do include sore throat, cough, congestion. It looks a whole heck of a lot like flu, or strep, or other symptoms, allergies. And long COVID symptoms include headaches, brain fog, fatigue, coughing, breathing issues. I wanted to highlight that we have been having regular meetings with Calvert Health Medical Center about COVID as we sort of go into the fall and winter season. We all understand that there's a heavy burden that's placed on our healthcare system at the hospital, and so we want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to encourage folks to be protected so that we don't place the burden on the ER staff, the hospital staff, the ICU staff. Our COVID data is up through the first week of October, into the first week of October. The orange line or the yellow line is our positivity rate, so that did come down off of a high this summer. So, leading into the fall and winter, we've seen a slightly lower positivity rate, and you can see the overall case counts there are generally about 85 to 90 per week. At this point that I submitted the data on October the 4th, Calvert County residents who had received the bivalent booster, which was the one that was approved last year, was around 17,000. The Calvert County residents who have received the updated shot 2023, it's about 1,900. I personally got my COVID 2023 shot about two Fridays ago from one of the pharmacies. It was a really smooth process, no cost, billed to TRICARE, and very minimal side effects, you know, arm pain, fatigue a little bit. So, I would encourage anybody who's at greater risk, or who has a large family, who cannot be burdened with being out of work for a period of time, that they might want to consider doing this. This is our COVID data for the year. I had our epidemiologist pull a full, as close to a year, actually, it's not a year, I'm sorry, it's about six months worth since the last Board of Health presentation. And you can see here that we saw quite a spike over the summer months, probably with increased travel and folks being indoors during the hotter months of the year. And again, these are all reported tests through PCR tests, so these are not any longer looking at the home tests that are antigen tests because people no longer have an opportunity to report those. The vaccine is available at retail pharmacies and some doctors' offices. Insurance does cover this vaccine. There should be no out-of-pocket costs for this year. It is considered to be safe, effective, and prevents against severe disease. And the cool thing, I guess, if you want to consider it cool, from my perspective, it's cool, almost anyone who has either been vaccinated or is unvaccinated only needs one dose of vaccine, period. So, anyone five to 11 who's never been vaccinated or has received any combination, they only need one dose. Anybody who's unvaccinated or vaccinated who's older only needs one dose. So, the thought is that people likely have been exposed, whether or not they actually had symptoms of illness, they were likely exposed, their body was primed, and so they only need one dose at this point. The only caveat to that is people who are severely immunocompromised, so that's people who are undergoing cancer treatment, on medications to suppress their immune system, they will likely need more booster doses. And then the kids that are six months to four years of age, that top portion of the left slide, those kiddos who are unvaccinated will need a full series. They've likely never been exposed to it, or they've been shielded from it, so we need to rev up their system a little bit. It's just like any other immunization that we do for kids that are younger. They usually need a series. Any questions about that stuff? So, I'm switching gears from infectious disease to other chronic conditions, so I'll open up to any questions about the infectious disease stuff.
So, now we have to get all these vaccinations. Are there times between them? Can you get them all at one time, or?
So, technically, you can get them all at one time. I personally have recommended to my family members to maybe space them out just so that they don't get achy and, you know, feverish and things like that. People want to still be able to do things even after they get a vaccine. So, if you've always gotten a flu vaccine and you've never had a problem, it's probably okay to lump the flu vaccine in with something else. If you've gotten all of your COVID vaccines and you've never had any sequela, go ahead and lump them together. Flu and COVID can be co-administered. There's no contraindication to that. You could always get all three together if you really wanted to. Most people like to space them out.
And you, they're available at most pharmacies and doctors' offices?
Yeah. So, the pharmacies are probably the number-one place to go for people three years of age and up. We are going to be incorporating vaccines for our littlest kiddos. The COVID vaccines cannot, none of the vaccines can be administered at pharmacies under the age of three. So, we will be continuing to incorporate that age group into all of our clinics at the Health Department. Many pediatrician offices, family doctor offices are looking into getting the vaccines. The problem is that availability, supply is a problem, payment from insurance companies is a problem, so if they're not going to be paying for it, it can be very difficult. So, at this point, pharmacies are the way to go for most people who are adults.
And all this information is available on your website?
Uh-huh. CalvertHealth.org. Yes, absolutely. And you can also talk with your medical provider, because there aren't, some of these things, like the RSV vaccination, really should be an individual decision that's made between two people, the medical provider and the patient. Most of those things can be really determined in that way. All right. Switching gears, this is Sammy. He's also 11. He's border collie mix. He's a rescue. So, I really wanted to highlight diabetes in our county. The Maryland Diabetes Action Plan was put forth, I believe, in late 2019, and we've been working diligently to ensure that there are ways that our community can get access to not only prevention of diabetes, but also treatment of diabetes. These two graphs highlight a couple things that I wanted to point out. I pulled the gender specific data for adults with diabetes to highlight that there is a disparity there between current percentage of males versus females. And I'd like to highlight that men, just like at the Men's Health Expo, we really want to encourage men to get visits to their doctors, screening labs, and make sure that they're seeing somebody for their medical care. Women do a far better job of seeing their medical providers on a regular basis, and they are generally the people who are driving healthcare decisions. So, we really want to encourage men to make sure that they're getting in to see their medical provider and listen to what they have to say. The graph on the right, or the map on the right-hand side, shows a little bit of the percentage breakdown by county. You can see that Solomon's has a very high rate, but also Prince Frederick and even Sunderland has a higher rate. So, we look to these graphs and to these metrics to help determine where the greatest need is in our county when we're looking at things from the Health Department perspective. Diabetes is defined as a random glucose of over 200, a fasting glucose of over 140, or an A1C of 6.4 or greater. I put on there the diabetes complications. The concern for all of us physicians is that people who have longstanding diabetes will ultimately land in one of those categories, stroke or heart attack, artery disease, nerve damage, eye damage, those sorts of kidney damage. These are sorts of things that cost a lot of money, but also, people don't want to live constantly having to go to the doctor to be seen for these complications. So, the more that we can do to prevent people from becoming diabetic and then adequately treat diabetes, the better off we'll do as a community. Knowing your risk is important. So, the right-hand slide is the progression from obesity, hypertension, insulin resistance, all the way through prediabetes into diabetes. So, you can see there's sort of a step ladder and then a slide down. So, if we can start making changes in those risk factors as people step up the slide before they even go in the downward slide, that's our goal. We would like to prevent those sorts of things by eating healthy, exercise, but then once people are a known prediabetic or a diabetic, there's things that we can do as a medical profession to help. There's medications, there's programs that can be done. There is a diabetes quiz located on our website at CalvertHealth.org. If your score is five or greater, you should see a physician, a nurse practitioner, or a PA to discuss your treatment options. We do host a Living Well with Diabetes class. It's cost-free. There is a virtual class that runs in the evenings, and there's an in-person class that's held at the Office on Aging throughout the county multiple different times a year. That's for all age groups, though. It's not just for those folks that take advantage of the Office on Aging services that might be older in age. It's six weeks in duration. Our next classes start in November. The hospital has diabetes education classes that are more focused on the medical component, so our classes are more about how you can manage your diabetes by eating healthier at a restaurant, by checking your blood sugar regularly. The diabetes education classes are a bit more technologically geared towards your numbers, your finger sticks, those sorts of things. And then registered dietitians can be found throughout the county. One of the local medical groups, Calvert Internal Medicine Group, does have a registered dietitian who can meet with people to help them talk about their risks and how to go about treating their diabetes from a diet perspective. Highlighting obesity, one of my passions is to help reduce obesity in our youth, and this is something that we can all help with, not only by encouraging exercise and outdoor activity, but also to make sure that they're eating healthy, nutritious foods. Children who are generally 12 to 19 years of age, well, maybe a little bit towards the upper end of that, but 12 to maybe 15 or 16, they don't have a say in going to get food from the store. They're not likely the people that are making the food or buying the food. So, we really want to enable them to make healthy choices and not say that something's bad or good, but make healthier choices when we are going to a restaurant or when we're going out to eat. It does sort of show on that right-hand graph, all of our adults who are obese in the county, we've sort of vacillated around the 30% to 34% mark. The number of overweight individuals is another 37%, so we're up to about 60% to 70% of our county not being a normal body mass index, and we really need to focus on this epidemic. What can we do to help that? Exercise, eating right, making this a family endeavor, you know? Got a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you work with the physicians? Because it seems that that is your best avenue to have the physicians educate their patients
Yes.
and the families.
Yes.
How else do you get the information out there?
Yeah. So, as the, so I wear a couple different hats, and the supervisor of community health over at the Health Department, but I'm also a physician liaison. So, when we have classes that are coming up, when we have things that are happening in the community, I send out emails or call the local physician medical group. I'm also the chair of the Family Medicine Department at the hospital, so I'm able to get some of that messaging out through that mechanism. We also used to run something called 4Cs, which is Calvert County Curbside Consult, and so some primary care physicians could get together with some specialists and learn some different techniques and different treatment options that may not be taught routinely, but that the specialists might have in their back pocket. So, we do try to regularly interact with the physicians to ensure that they're getting the most up-to-date knowledge, and so that they can refer their patients to us for programs and to the hospital for programs. I think it is much easier to have that conversation with a trusted medical provider about the things that you need to do, rather than to hear it from social media or from a class. So, I do encourage everybody, regardless of where they may think that they are, talk to their medical provider, because that's the best place to go. But yes, we're in constant contact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you seen a difference in, when you go back to like, say, the 70s or 80s where we're a more physical society? Because, you know, now, you don't do anything anymore.
Yeah. That's a great question, and honestly, we have epidemiologists who can probably dig into that a little bit more. It's not typically highlighted on the Healthy Calvert data metrics, so I can, I can get back to you about it.
I'd be just curious
Absolutely.
um, see the different trends in society.
Yeah. I will say, I'm at Hollowing Point Park probably about five nights a week, but there's a lot of families that are out there trying to do what's best, so I think that we just need to encourage them to keep doing those things that maintain activity. I'd like to encourage parents, if they're sitting on the sidelines, get up and walk around while your kid's playing soccer, or softball, or lacrosse, or whatever.
And not hold a Starbucks coffee.
Yes, exactly. Right, right, right. So, trying to encourage that. You know, the other thing, I coached a couple softball teams, and, you know, snacks after every game, you know? What are the snacks typically? They're typically something that's not as healthy. So, we need to sort of rethink how we, how we put these things in front of our youth. We don't want them to be tricked into thinking that, you know, they can eat or drink whatever they want. Program operation, options for obesity, I just want to highlight that we do have a Prevent T2 class. The reason that it's now called Prevent T2 is that obviously, we can't really prevent type 1 diabetes. That's the type that happens most often in youth, so it's now called Prevent T2. The goal is to lose 5% to 7% of body weight, get active, and reduce the risk of diabetes. There are other considerations to maybe for the people who are non-prediabetic, so TOPS, which is run through Calver County Parks and Rec. We have obesity specialists locally, and we also, there's medical options now for obesity that people might want to partake in. I also wanted to highlight that we have, I don't think many people are aware, but there is a Community Health Improvement Roundtable. It's spearheaded by the hospital and the Health Department, and it's a requirement that every jurisdiction in the state have some sort of coalition that tackles these sorts of things. The Community Health Needs Assessment that's run every three years through the hospital is what dictates what those subcommittees will be. One of the subcommittees for the past three years has been diabetes. I anticipate that continuing going forward. We just finished the 2023 Health Needs Assessment. The other subcommittees are Tobacco and Cancer, Health Ministries as it pertains to churches, and Behavioral Health. So, on the Healthy Calvert website, you can see here that there's a lot of information that we have listed for people who are diabetic, or for people who have a loved one who might be at risk. So, you can go on there, gather some information. We have farmer's market mapping, Calvert Healthy Activity mapping, so you can go on there if you feel so moved. Any questions about diabetes? Unobese. There's a lot of information, sorry. This is Jinx. She's our two-year-old COVID rescue from pets with disabilities. She didn't have a disability, but she's silly. Tobacco and vaping in our county certainly is a problem, and we have a lot of pro- Tobacco and vaping in our county certainly is a problem, and we have a lot of programs to help. Vaping rates have increased in our county in both teens and adults, and I'd just like to highlight that there are several risks, including chronic lung disease, exacerbation of other underlying health issues like asthma, worsening anxiety, sleep issues, mood swings with vaping, and then e-volly, which is e-cigarette and vaping-associated lung injury. And that's where there's an actual chemical reaction to the products that are in vape sticks. We also have other costs that we need to take into account, rather than just our individual risks. So, there have been over 3,800 calls to poison control for accidental ingestion of vape products in just this year alone. We also have to think about the environmental impact from vaping, so air quality. They have incendiary devices or battery power, and they're plastics. So, we do need to keep in mind that even if we're not making these choices or prioritizing them for our own health, there are other true costs that exist. And just to highlight that the Clean Indoor Air Act does, exists to help prevent smoking or vaping in public businesses, and people can reference that if they'd like. This is credited to Dr. Galiot-Sados, who is a pulmonologist at Hopkins, who we regularly ask to talk with the biomedical students in the school system and to the local medical community about vaping and e-cigarettes. And his big driving point is that chemicals drive enjoyment, and that's a good thing, right? We all have chemicals that are naturally in our brain that drive enjoyment when we eat a piece of chocolate cake, when we do something like maybe run a marathon, there's chemicals that drive enjoyment of these things. Chemicals also drive addiction. And so, for individuals 25 or less, if they start on something, we know that they are much, much more likely to stick with that item for potentially their whole life. Nicotine in particular is very addictive to a young brain. And so, if we can stop kids from starting before they get to that age, if they want to partake in it after that, I guess that's, you know, that's up to them. But we really want to reduce, we want to reduce the risk of addiction. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey, hopefully you all are aware of this, but it's done in the school system, and you can pull the data from the Youth Behavioral Risk Survey and look at it for both the middle school and the high school. 75% of those that answered the survey report not using e-cigarettes or vapes. So, that's an awesome number. But 24% of those who did vape report using flavored products. So, they use candy-flavored or fruit-flavored products, and these are marketed specifically to our youth, and this is a major problem. Over 4,700 students report vaping THC-containing products. And just as a reminder, THC is illegal still for those 21 years of age or younger, even with new legislation, and we know that THC does cause many negative health effects, especially in high concentrations, which these vaping products have. 1,500 students report vaping every single day, which means they're addicted. They can't stop.
That's out of our 15,000 student.
That's out of our students.
That's 10%?
Mm-hmm.
It's actually more than 10%.
Which goes.
Elementary kid schools.
Well, it's middle and high schools that are surveyed, but ultimately, we know that this is an addiction, right? Because they can't, they can't, they have cravings. They have to meet those cravings.
So, do you know, sorry?
No.
So, if you're only surveying middle and seniors, you know what that number is? So, it's actually more than 10%?
It's actually more, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. And actually, when we talk to experts, both at the state and national level about vaping, they're actually recommending that we start talking to kids as young as third and fourth grade about vaping, because they're seeing that kids are seeing their older siblings or their parents even vaping, and they think of it as being okay. So, we do want to make sure that we're targeting as many people before they get to that point as possible. Once they're addicted, we do have some options, okay? So, we do have safe treatment options for youth, and people can go on our website or call that number. There is a typo on this, so I'm sorry, but the SAVES program, which is Saturday Anti-Vaping Education Sessions, are held once monthly. So, teens who want to quit, who need to quit because their parents say so, whose doctors have referred them to the program, or who've been caught in the school system and need to come to this program, can come. It's nine to noon, once per month on a Saturday at the Health Department. They're provided with coping strategies, resilience strategies, a behavioral health staff member is there, as well as Jane. And so, she could, Jane Dodds is the person who helps us with tobacco cessation. She provides food, and she can also provide referrals to other outside resources.
So, did you say if a student is caught vaping in school, they're required to take their.
No, they can be given that option to come from nine to noon. It's not a requirement, but they can be recommended to come, especially if they're at the point where they're like, "I want to quit." That's the best time for us to take advantage of that, if they're ready to be done. And this is an expensive habit. It's not cheap to vape. We have people who are spending hundreds of dollars per month on vape equipment. So, sometimes that's the motivator, right?
The students, you mean?
Students.
Wonder where that money comes from?
And they're selling, and they're selling their products as well.
Wonder where that money comes from?
Right, exactly.
Where's mom and dad?
Exactly, yeah.
What happens if they get caught vaping in school?
So, they are provided in-school suspension, I believe, is one of the options. There's a whole conduct, you know, a conduct form, student conduct. They, I think, have five different options, so they, it's a graded option, but my understanding is that ultimately, they can be given an in-school suspension if it's a problem. But we really want to make sure that people understand that to put a kid in an in-school suspension who's truly addicted is probably not going to be that beneficial, right? They really need to be provided help so that they don't keep vaping. So, if they can come to one of our sessions and learn how to be more resilient and cope with the stressors, that would be helpful. That's what we want.
Have we thought about holding some of them classes at the schools itself?
Yes, we would love to. Jane's always more than willing to work with the school system. The school system's been wonderful, allowing us to come in for high school health fairs. So, we'll be doing two this fall and two in the spring. We do lunch and learn programs with them. So, anything that we can do that will help coordinate this for the students so that they don't have to get their transportation to the, you know, to Prince Frederick can be sometimes cumbersome for people. We also have these Vaping Unplugged Groups, which is more of a peer-led group within the school system. They're faculty-backed, and they are peer-to-peer discussions. So, these are kids who might not want vaping to be in existence, so they can help with some of that messaging to their peers. They also can come up with messaging to middle schoolers and elementary school students. So, if high schoolers are moved to do that, look to the Vaping Unplugged Groups. This is Copper. He's rescued from pets with disabilities. He got shot and has a femur fracture, but he's healing well, as puppies do. I wanted to outline our Diversity and Health Equity Team, Highway to Health, you may have seen, driving around the county. And since launching last September at Recovery Fest, we've attended 62 events. We've had interactions with over 400 members of the community. We've done health checks on 400, we've done 450 health checks. People have been linked to services, including case management services, and enrollees have also been linked to outside local services, including healthcare providers, insurance, durable medical equipment, which thanks to Ed Sullivan and Jennifer Moreland, the gift of mobility, has been very influential for us, and then also, things like vaccination clinics or other health opportunities. This grant-funded project goes another two years, but we are hoping that at some point we can make it more sustainable. So, options for that are doing things that are billable to insurance or connecting with other ways that we can fund this.
The state grant or federal grant?
It's a CHRC grant, so Community Health Resources Commission. And we can apply for more, but technically, our grant runs out at that point. This is Todd, not named after you. So, Copper and Todd came to us at the same time, so an homage to Fox and the Hound. He's a parvovirus survivor. And I just wanted to finalize my slide deck with saying that we are regularly meeting to continue our crisis response team. While we're not mobilizing all 24/7 hours of the day, we are currently staffed for the hotline all the time, so people can always call that 1-877 number and be linked with a live person. Additionally, there are times when we have additional staff, like peers, therapists, and medical providers that can help assist people who are in crisis. So, we do want to highlight that we're continuing. We just had a meeting with the emergency room staff last week, so we're continuing to coordinate with folks for that crisis response team.
And remind me again, the mobile response team is not active currently?
Certain hours, we are unable to mobilize because of staffing constraints. We also looked at our data, and we found that not as many calls are between specific hours of the day. So, we sort of scaled back and were able to make our coverage a little bit more robust during those hours where we might see more people. So, yeah, it's not mobilized 100% of the time on the van, but there's people there, you know, throughout the day, so.
How is that funded?
Um, I'm not going to misspeak, so I will get back to you about that. But I believe it's all grant-funded, so I just have to figure out where, where that money's coming from.
What percentage of those you contact roughly do you see again come back?
Oh, like repeat users?
Well, recidivism, but also actually seek your help and seek your programs and that type of.
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I'll ask. Regina Turnbull is now our supervisor of crisis response, so I can get that information for you from her. And then, one more thing from the YRBS before I end. One of the questions that they ask the youth, and I thought this was very interesting. During your life, how often have you felt that you were able to talk to an adult in your family or another caring adult about your feelings? And 41 to 42% of high school students say never or rarely. Now, whether or not, I have, I have an 18-year-old, so I know that sometimes it's not like he's coming to me to talk to me about things. But I just think that it's an opportunity for us to realize, you know, how can we be more involved with the youth in our county? Can we be more involved as coaches, as aunts and uncles, as grandparents, you know, making sure that kids can come to us and ask us questions, talk to us about their feelings?
I'm surprised it's that low.
Yeah, I know. Well, you know, and sometimes, you know, the perception may not be the reality here, you know, and, you know, they have to think back about, you know, when did they actually last need to come talk to someone? But we really want to encourage people to be involved with their, with the youth in the county.
I think part of the problem what we see now is that these issues are getting younger and younger.
They are. They absolutely are, yeah.
I mean, when I was in school, which was a long time ago, Commissioner Hart, you know, that you didn't even think about so many things starting until high school.
I know.
And now, it's an elementary school. I mean, you, you're not surveying vaping in elementary schools, but I wouldn't be shocked that there aren't elementary school kids vaping.
Oh, I, I'm, I am assuming that there are. And the other thing, to your point, Mr. Hart, is that we don't have data from years past on things like that, you know?
Well, the mindset has changed.
It has.
There was a mindset, if you want something, you go get it.
That's true.
You went, get it was work for it.
It's true.
And it's our fault. I mean, we give our kids way too much.
Sure.
We're all to blame.
Sure.
And the consequence, what do you send them to your room?
Right.
It's Toyland.
Or Tabletland or Computerland.
So, you know, it's just, and that's why I ask, you know, because there wasn't the option for mom and dad to give it to you, because they didn't have it.
It's true.
And you worked.
It's all about access. They have access to everything now at a very young age.
Or you go outs, you're supposed to go outside, you know? Go outside, ride your bike.
It's disappointing that we were raised that way, but yet, we don't have enough guts to raise our kids that way, you know? So, here we go, you know, we learned a good work ethic, but we don't have the courage to teach it to our kids, because they might not like us. God forbid, we're not the cool mom or dad, and we're actually mom and dad and not their friend.
Right, exactly.
I tell my kids, I don't want you to hate me.
Right.
But if you do hate me, and you end up being able to support yourself and be a positive influence in the world, I can live with that.
And that's a success, yeah, in that respect, yeah.
And because what we hear from teachers now is that, you know, again, when we went to school, when you got in trouble, they called your parents. You got in trouble.
It's true.
And now, when the teachers call the parents, the parents say, "Well, what did you do?"
Yeah.
You know, it's your fault.
Not helping.
That my student is not, you know, my child is misbehaving, it's your fault.
Right.
I'm much more afraid of my parents than I was at school system. Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
And they spanked.
Yeah, back in the day.
Was Mr. Spaulter there when you were there?
No. I remember he spanked.
Ooh.
And there was an option, that or there, and then, of course, these hands have seen many.
I don't know that I want to go back.
I've seen many nuns, rulers in my time, Commissioner Williams could tell you that.
Yeah, I went to Catholic school.
Yes.
One thing that we did, and I, oh, I really would like to see more of this, is we're all so busy, and we have careers and so on and so forth, but what we did in our house, and believe me, our kids put us through our paces, but we were there. And we had an agreement as to how often we would be out of the home to create moments within the house where the kids could come and talk to us.
Talk to you, yeah.
Sometimes they did, sometimes they didn't, but.
It's true. It's true. You have to build the foundation.
And our home was not a democracy, it was a dictatorship. And it was run by my husband and myself, and there were consequences to actions, so.
Right.
Just kind of an agent type of thinking, you know?
Well, I think that, I think the good news is that we are, as long as we're talking about some of this stuff, it's still something that's relevant and can be made different, you know? I think that ultimately, it's the times when we're not talking about these things that they sort of, you know, go under the carpet. So, I think when we're talking about them, we're making a difference, we're talking to other people. We talk to the school system all the time. We talk to, you know, all other entities as many times as we possibly can, the doctor's offices. I think it is important for us to have those discussions, the tough discussions.
Don't put your, don't put your head in the sand, because little Johnny or Mary, they're going to shock you.
That's true, that's true. Any questions otherwise?
So, any trends you see coming out now that are?
Health trends?
Yeah.
I just think that we really need to focus on the obesity and overweight epidemic. I think it's, I think that's a, I think that's a bigger epidemic than anything else that we deal with. And I'm, I'm hoping that what we do can change things. I think that it's great that there are medical options now and surgical options for people who want to become healthier, and I want to encourage people to have those tough discussions with their health providers as well. If you're at that point, that's something that you might want to think about to reduce the likelihood of you having complications down the line, so.
Is Calvert County overrepresented in diabetes and obesity?
No.
No?
No, this is a, this is, this is a state, national trend, yeah. It's not unique. In fact, our county to the west, Charles, I think their obesity rate is 40%, and I think that they might be the highest, one of the highest in the state. So, it's, it's not, we're not unique in that respect. But if we can tie together programs and do things to help, maybe we can make changes here in Calvert that could be used in other jurisdictions. And that's our, that's always our hope, is that we can come up with some creative strategies for them, so. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn the meeting of Calvert County Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
A motion in a second that we adjourn the meeting of the Calvert County Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. So, that brings us to public hearings. The first one is Department of Community Resources, American Rescue Plan, Older Americans Act Title III Funding. Director, Mr. Sullivan.
Good morning, sir.
She got up, I thought she was coming.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ed Sullivan, Division Chief of the Office on Aging. Thanks, Dr. Folsom, for mentioning our partnership with the diabetes classes, which we have at our senior centers. Appreciate that, and the durable medical equipment at our senior centers. I'll get down to it. I'm going to go ahead and read the memo for the American Rescue Plan funding. Background, the Department of Community Resources Office on Aging Division has been allocated has been allocated American Rescue Plan, Older Americans Act funding through the Maryland Department of Aging. This funding is issued under the authority of the American Rescue Plan Act P dot L dot 117 dash 2 for activities authorized under Title III Part B of the Older Americans Act of 1965 as amended through P dot L dot 116 dash 131 enacted March 25th, 2020. Due to the amount of grant funding involved, a public hearing and resolution is required by the Board of County Commissioners under Section 5 dash 103 of the Code of the Public Local Laws of Calver County. Discussion, the Maryland Department of Aging awarded the Office on Aging $289,940 to support nutrition, national family caregivers, supportive services, and preventive health as outlined in the attached budget adjustment 2024 dash 000108. The fiscal impact on Calver County taxpayers is none. The recommendation and conclusion is that we hope that upon acceptance of any public input, staff request that if appropriate, the board close the record, accept the grant award, adopt and enact that resolution approving budget adjustment 2024 dash 000108 and request the release of funds from the grantor. And certainly, if you have any questions, I welcome them. I will say, uh, one of the things we tried to do as an agency, uh, in our delay was, was purchase some things. For example, at Southern Pine Senior Center, we doubled the size of the fitness room, and we submitted to the Maryland Department of Aging to, uh, to fill that space with equipment. It was denied. I wanted, I was hoping to be able to fund that through ARP funds. They denied it, which I was kind of impressed with, uh, but, uh, the answer was no. So one of the part, part of the delay has been to spend those funds in other areas which the state has, uh, declined. But we have a plan. You, you can see the plan. I'm certainly here to answer any questions about our spending plan with these ARP funds. Thank you.
Is there any public?
And it is a public hearing. No one has signed up, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak at this public hearing regarding this topic, there's a sign-in sheet here to my right. Same for the other two public hearings, and there's no one online, Mr. President.
Questions, actions?
I make a motion, Mr. President, that, uh, I move that we close the record and accept the grant award, adopt and enact a resolution approving budget amendment 2024 dash 108 and request to release of the funds.
Second.
I have a motion, a second that we close the record and accept the grant award, adopt and enact the resolution approving budget amendment 2024 dash 108 and request the release of funds. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you.
Our second public hearing is for the Department of Community Resources. Community Development Block Grant, a budget amendment for renovations at 85 Main Street, Prince Frederick. Good morning, Ms. Colver.
Good morning, Commissioners. You know, I always have those short titles, right? Um, I'm Jaclyn Culver. I'm the Special Project Manager with the Department of Community Resources. I'm here for a public hearing today, and I'm going to proceed with reading our memo. Background, in May 2023, the Department of Community of Resources coordinated an application for additional community development block grant funding, TDBG, from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, DHTD, for the renovation of 85 Main Street, Prince Frederick, as an emergency weather shelter and homeless services day program. At the May 23rd, 2023 meeting, the Board of County Commissioners voted to approve the submission of the application. Discussion, DHTD awarded $574,318 in grant funding. A budget amendment is needed to complete the design and construction. In order to proceed with the project, a public hearing is required to provide an opportunity for public comment in accordance with applicable laws and the county citizen participation plan. The record will be held open for 10 days to receive public comment. Fiscal impact, the fiscal impact is an increase in grant funding of 574,318, $574,318 to the Emergency Shelter 85 Main Street Capital Improvement Plan, with the county provides in-kind administrative support for the project. Conclusions and recommendations, the Department of Community Resources requests the board hold a public hearing. Staff will return after 10 days on November 7th, 2023 to request the board close the record, approve the budget amendment BA 2024 dash 000113 and adopt the attached resolution, and this was coordinated through the Office, the County Attorney, and the Department of Finance and Budget. Um, I am, uh, here to answer any questions, and the amendments and agreements will be coming after we approve this. Um, if this budget adjustment is approved, you'll see more from me.
I don't see any questions. Any comment?
I've none.
No one has signed up to speak, and no one is on Zoom.
All right.
I'll see you Zoom.
So we.
Any motion?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we close the record?
Second.
Have a motion, a second that we close the record. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Culver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to our third and final public hearing, Department of Parks and Recreation, Budget Adjustment for Edward T. Hall Aquatic Center Roof and HVAC Replacement. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Branham, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. There's another public hearing scheduled for today. The hearing has been duly advertised, and the certificate of publication is made part of the record for this hearing. The public is invited to provide comment on the hearing after the presentation is concluded. Anyone here in person must sign in on the sheet next to the attorney in order to speak. This public hearing is for the purpose of considering and receiving comments regarding budget adjustment BA 2024 dash 000144, making available $1,250,000 to begin the process of design and construction preparation for the roof and HVAC at the Hall Aquatic Center. Background, the Department of Parks and Recreation operates the Edward T. Hall Aquatic Center located at 130 Auto Drive in Prince Frederick. Due to the age and the increased demand on the HVAC system, it has become inefficient and prone to frequent breakdowns. The existing roof of the aquatic facility is now showing signs of significant damage, including leaks, cracks, and deterioration in the operation of the roof panels. Immediate action is necessary to prevent further deterioration and to maintain the structural integrity of the building. Discussion, to begin the process of design and construction preparation for the roof and HVAC at the Hall, a funding source of $1,250,000 is required in fiscal year 2024. A budget amendment of this amount should be accounted for in the FY 2024 budget. The budget amendment requires a public hearing because it is in excess of $150,000. A notice of public hearing was advertised for two weeks in October 2023, soliciting an opportunity for public comment. The total project cost is estimated at $8,500,000 based on a feasibility study and cost analysis on the HVAC and actual pricing for the roof replacement. Further funding requirements will be proposed in future budget cycles. Fiscal impact, bear with me. If approved, this amends the adopted budget for FY 2024 to appropriate and allocate $1,250,000 for planning, design, and start of replacement of HVAC equipment for roofing for the Hall Aquatic Center by allocating $1,46,748 from American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 ARPA Projects 50012, salaries and benefits, spend category salaries. $25,000 from ARPA Projects 50013, operating supplies and expenses, spend category, wearing apparel boot allow. $50,000 from ARPA Projects 50017, utility, spend category, telephone. $119,500 from ARPA Projects 50015, contracted services, spend category, computer software. And $4,000, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped down, spent, uh, computer software. It's contracted services, $4,752 from ARPA Projects 50023, capital expenditures, spend category, computer software, and $4,000 from ARPA Projects 50023, capital expenditures, project, uh, stormwater CIP 00242, spend category, stormwater management, to ARPA Projects 50023, capital expenditures, project, ARPA Hall Aquatic Center, CIP 00317, spend category, architecture and engineering, and $450,000, and ARPA Projects 50023, capital expenditures, project, ARPA Hall Aquatic, CIP 00317, spend category, building improvements, mechanical systems, and $800,000. Conclusion, recommendation, the Department of Parks and Recreation is recording, is requesting the Board of County Commissioners to review, and if deemed appropriate, recommend following a public comment period that the Board of Comment, the Board of County Commissioners close the record. Staff will return after 10 days to request approval of budget adjustment 2024 000144. The floor has been opened for public comment on this hearing. Resolution 6 dash 89 was adopted and is available here today to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Those attending in person will be invited to speak first. For those joining virtually, if you wish to speak, please press star nine or use the raise your hand function. Virtual participants will be identified by their screen name or last four digits of their phone number and unmuted one at a time. Speakers will be asked to state their name and address. Speakers who are providing comment as individuals will be allocated two minutes. Speakers who are the designated representative of a group will be allocated five minutes at this time. I'll check to see if anyone has signed up to speak.
No one has signed up, and there's still no one on Zoom.
So Mr. Depay assumed that all that fiscal impact is surpluses that were left over from a lot of other projects that you're pulling together?
Yes, sir, and it was routed and vetted through finance and budget as well as legal.
Just, it was a lot.
It, it, I got tongue-tied in reading it.
What's the age of that building?
I'm sorry?
So you did a good job being through it.
What's the age of that building?
Uh, the building, from construction versus opening, but it's roughly 13, 13 years old?
It's a shame, isn't it?
Uh, yes, sir, it is.
It's got plastic sheds older than that that sit outside. I don't do nothing to it.
I think, well, my opinion, right, part of the conditions that we deal with are the nature of an auditorium and the humidity and the chemicals.
Oh, it's from design on, from the beginning.
But agreed, yes, sir.
Well, will this, will this one take all that into consideration on a future board? Say 10 to 15 years now, we'll be looking at the same thing, or, or is it looking very similar to kind of what you have today?
No, sir, I think that, um, lessons learned, uh, we talked about chloramines and using not only the UV system, but the design of the HVA system to reduce that in the auditorium. So there was a study done, and, um, I would assume that the projections are to last longer than a new facility needing a new roof and HVAC in 13 years.
And how old is the current AC?
It, it's from inception.
Okay.
It's not been replaced. It has been patched and repaired many times, though.
So they've made improvements over the years to have an HVAC system that will accommodate an aquatic center. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the roof's going to be sealed this time, no open and closing, flat roof?
They're looking at a solid structure roof versus the roof panels.
So that was a lot of the issue. It has been three years, correct?
Right. Yeah, the roof panels, um, no longer function as they should. Many of them have been screwed shut and cannot be opened any longer.
But we will have a skywalk in the current build.
When we met to discuss the project, that was part of what was discussed. Um, just due to the nature of changing the socks and things of that, the, the lights, um, it's not accessible. We have to drain the pole and build scaffolding to change light bulbs at this point.
How many people does take to change a light bulb?
Too many.
There are a lot, yeah.
Any other questions? Motion?
I move that we close the record.
Second.
Have a motion, a second that we close the record. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Depay.
Thank you.
That brings us to proclamations. First one is the 2023 Government Experience Project Award. Commissioner Grasso, Director.
Is Stephen here?
I don't see him.
I don't see, okay.
Stephen. Is he waiting in the wings? There he comes.
Hi, Stephen, you want to come on up?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Stephen Ferreira, Director of Technology Services. Um, the winning of the Center for Digital Government Project Experience Award is not just another accolade. It's a testament to government entities who are trying to redefine the very nature of public service, marrying innovation and public need to creative, responsive, efficient, and engaging experiences. Today, I'm proud to share with you that Calvert County's Encompass Portal project has been recognized among the top 10 projects nationwide. Um, to give you a snapshot, in 10 months since the launch, we've moved from an entirely paper-based system, um, to one where we now get more than 50% of applications come into us digitally. Um, processing time for these applications have halved. Um, looking forward, I'm thrilled to announce that the next phase of this project will go live in November. This will further streamline the process, ensuring that Calvert County remains at the forefront of innovation. More permits will be digitalized on the portal, including plumbing, electrical, grading, commercial use, and home occupation. We are not just embracing change, we are creating it. Our goal is to maximize customer satisfaction through enhanced efficiency and accessibility. And the acknowledgement from the Center of Digital Government is a shining testament to our dedication and the work that we have done. In wrapping up, my deepest appreciation goes to the Calver County Board of Commissioners. Their steadfast, your steadfast support has been invaluable. To every team member, leader, and individual who has breathed light into the Encompass project, your passion and dedication does not go unnoticed. Together, we are sculpting a brighter, more efficient future for Calvert County. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there anybody else who would like to come up? Introduce, introduce themselves and come on up.
Yes, sir. Parking orders all the way down the road.
Morning, Commissioners. Uh, I'm Colin Robbins, the Applications, or Enterprise Applications Team, uh, Manager. Uh, I work with Dawn, Amy, and Nicholas, and this has been a massive project for them, planning, zoning, IMP, uh, all the departments, and it's just been great working for it and looking forward to your plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
They're slowly coming.
Slowly coming? Okay, okay, well, come on. Come on, Amy. Introduce yourselves.
You're supposed to introduce yourselves.
That's okay, that's okay, yeah, just say your name.
Amy O'Connor, Technology Services.
Dawn, Mr. Technology Services Land Management Coordinator.
Danielle, Real Inspection and Permits.
Kat Lockwood, Planning and Zoning.
Nicole White, Economic Development.
Kelsey Chavis, Planning and Zoning.
Jessie Clark, Planning and Zoning.
Ron Marnie, Planning and Zoning.
You can come up here.
Beth Rimmer, Planning and Zoning.
Is that it? Okay, that's everybody. Well, I've worked in, for a lot of government agencies, and I think that our TS section, Services Division, I would hold you up to any one, ever since I've been here, and I'm not a, I'm not a techie person. I am lousy. I have a son who does what you do, and when he comes to our home and tries to show me something, I say, do not show me, do it. My head will explode. And you all have taken such good care of the Commissioners. You do such a wonderful job, and this is not your first award. Since I've been here, how many have you all had, Stephen? I mean, there were quite a few. Yes, you have, and you all should be proud of it. You keep us moving and you keep us safe, most definitely. So thank you all for all that you do. Thank you very much, very much. Um, teamwork makes the dream work, right?
Well, thank you all for all that you do.
Okay, the proclamation, whereas Calver County Government has been awarded the 2023 Government Experience Project Award for its remarkable achievement in the implementation and configuration of the Encompass, Comprehensive Digital Land Management System. And whereas the Encompass Portal has enabled online permit application processing by integrating electronic submission, validation, document management, payments, geospatial data, responsive design, and analytics to improve efficiency, accessibility, and customer satisfaction. And whereas the Encompass Portal stands as a testament to Calver County Government's dedication to employing innovative strategies to streamline and enhance citizen services, engagement, and interaction with land management processes as highlighted by the 2023 Government Experience Project Award presented by the Center for Digital Government. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Calver County Board of County Commissioners recognizes Calver County Government for its exceptional accomplishment in winning the 2023 Government Experience Project Award. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners expresses gratitude to the dedicated teams, leaders, and individuals who have contributed their expertise, time, and efforts to conceive and implement the Encompass, Comprehensive Digital Land Management System. Given under our hands and sealed this 17th day of October, signed by all five county commissioners. Congratulations to all of you, and thank you for what you do.
Smile. Want to get your blinks out really quick? Can you see the lens so we can see you later? Three, two, one, cheese. Thank you so much, all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. So that brings us to our next proclamation, White Cane Awareness Day. Commissioner Harland?
Amber, if you could come forward, please. Amber, if you could come forward, please.
Thank you.
If you want to introduce yourself and say a few words, please feel free.
Yes, thank you. This is my very first time here, so I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Amber Woods. I am one of the local presidents and the National Federation of the Blind in Maryland. And White Cane Awareness Day, or White Cane Safety Day, has been around for a very long time, but I appreciate that this cane here, as we like to call it, the white cane, some people call it stick, so please don't call it that, and our community is the white cane, and it gives us the independence that we need to get around. And I cannot imagine several years ago before Lyndon B. Johnson had signed it into a proclamation, how blind people got around before then. So thank you once again. And my name once again is Amber Woods, and I am grateful to be here and hearing about accessibility and accessibility. And that's what it is about, getting more independence for all citizens. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I guess being able to see something we all take for granted every day, this is important. I mean, you know, think about the things that we would miss, but, you know, driving and just walking and being out in the community, we need to make sure we're cognizant of people. When we see that white stick, like I said, they're struggling. And like I said, we need to make sure that they remain safe. That's fine. Without further ado, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the white cane, which every blind citizen of our county has the right to carry, demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life and the capacity to work productively in competitive employment. And whereas the white cane makes it possible for the blind to fully participate in and contribute to our society and to live the lives they want by allowing every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires that motorists and cyclists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And whereas Maryland law also calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware of and utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And whereas the county, with the cooperative assistance of the National Federation of the Blind of Maryland, can and should facilitate the expansion of employment opportunities and greater acceptance for blind persons in the competitive labor market. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, be known as White Cane Awareness Day in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners calls upon our schools and employers to offer a full range of training to blind persons in order to create new opportunities for the blind in our rapidly changing society and urge all citizens to recognize the white cane as a tool of independence for blind pedestrians on our streets and highways. Given under the hands and seal this seventeenth day of October twenty twenty-three, signed by all five Commissioners.
So the next item on the agenda is an award from the Employee Recognition Committee. Ms. Bosher? How are you?
Good. How are you doing today?
Wonderful.
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Tori Bosher, Recreation Coordinator for the Central District of Calvert County Parks and Recreation, and I'm here today as a member of the Employee Recognition Committee. It is my privilege to introduce Calvert County Government's September twenty twenty-three Employee of the Month. But before I introduce our award winner, here's a quick reminder of what we look for in an Employee of the Month. This award acknowledges individual excellence for superior job performance or special individual efforts that go above and beyond the employee's normal job duties. Some of the suggested criteria are effectiveness of public contact, respect for fellow employees, quality and/or quantity of work, contributions towards improving organizational morale, and actions that improve our public image. Anyone can nominate a coworker for this award. Simply have it signed by the employee supervisors and the department head. Please check out our ERC webpage on the county internet page for more information. We encourage all employees to be on the lookout for a worthy recipient. Without further ado, our September twenty twenty-three Employee of the Month is Harry Brown, Golf Course Mechanic for the Parks and Recreation Department at the Chesapeake Hills Golf Course. Congratulations, Harry, and will you please come up and join me? Harry consistently showcases outstanding and top-notch performance, consistently delivering work of exceptional quality. He possesses a remarkable ability to focus on even the smallest details, ensuring the completion of his tasks to perfection. His exceptional teamwork shines through as he collaborates with his colleagues at the Chesapeake Hills Golf Course and other divisions. He readily extends his support and shares his knowledge generously when it comes to equipment and maintenance. Harry's optimistic outlook and his dedication has made a significant and positive impact on both the Chesapeake Hills Golf Course and the entire department, elevating their overall effectiveness. Harry, most recently, but not limited to, repaired three pressure washers belonging to another division with no need to purchase anything. I know you all like that. Repaired a truck that was scheduled to be removed from service and assisted with the acquisition and repair of non-working heavy equipment that now supports the much-needed maintenance of an eighteen-hole golf course. He does all of this while performing the daunting, labor-intensive maintenance tasks of said golf course as well. The ERC is delighted to be part of this recognition, and we thank this exceptional coworker, Harry Brown, for helping all county departments communicate important messages, connect people with the right abilities, and making the government more transparent, approachable, and projecting what we all know, the Calvert County Government is the greatest place to live and work. Thank you, Harry, for all you do, and thank you, Commissioners, for your continued support of the Employee Recognition Committee. And I do believe there are some people here who would like to speak on behalf of Harry. Before they come up, I would like to say one thing. My very first position in the Calvert County Government was at the golf course. I was a beverage cart attendant, and Harry was one of the first people that I met, and he's one of the people that I have kept in touch with throughout the departments that I have worked in, and so I am delighted to be presenting this. I do feel it's come a little bit full circle, so I do want to congratulate him myself and whoever else would like to speak, and then Harry, if you would like to say anything else as well.
Thank everybody for what they do. I mean, they make me look good.
Harry, no, no, no. Harry, they tell me you're making us look good, so no, I hear different.
It's a gold mine down there.
You guys do great.
So do you keep JT straight down there?
Oh, my God. It's a job. No, I thank you all very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to come on up?
Come on up.
Shannon Nizall, Director of Parks and Recreation. What can I say about Harry? I mean, Harry has been an advocate for the golf course and Parks and Recreation and the county for, I mean, for forever. I've been here a little over six years, and he's one of the first people I spoke to down at the golf course, and he makes a point to come to every single one of my director roundtables when I go and meet with staff. It doesn't matter if it's the north end of the county, it's the middle end of the county, or it's down at the golf course. He will come, seek me out, and let me know what's going on, and offer up suggestions, and he's an amazing asset to the county, the department, and the golf course. There's a lot of things that were mentioned in the nomination in regards to the work that he does, and that doesn't even give a quarter of the things that he does for this county, saving money, being able to use equipment that may have been deemed unworthy to use in other things, and all he asks for is some shop rags and a couple parts, and he can get it done. So we make sure we get him those so he can work his magic. And great job, Harry. This is a well-deserved recognition, so proud of you. Congratulations.
One more. Come on, Harry. You know, I had to come say something. Mike couldn't be here, so he sent me. Definitely want to thank you very much. Brian Graybrick, Chesapeake Hills Golf Course Assistant General Manager. I had a whole bunch of different things I was going to say. A lot of the things have already been said, but the one thing I'm going to say, tell a little story, fourteen years, fifteen years? You and I are the same, right? We've been here for fifteen years at this golf course. When I first got here, you had a nickname. I don't even know if you knew you had the nickname, but they said, "If you need anything fixed, call Powder." If anybody's familiar with the movie, there's a movie about powder. The guy just touches things and they work. This is Harry. And I finally met Harry, and I said, "Wow." You're right. Let me rephrase that. Mechanical things? But again, just want to thank you. I mean, this is, I know this is an Employee of the Month, but really, it's about your body of work. I mean, fifteen years you've been doing this and keeping us running, and not just us, different departments throughout the county. So on behalf of myself and everybody at the course, thank you.
How, Harry? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have another award from Employee Recognition Committee? Good morning.
I think it always does.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Beth Rimmer. I'm a Planner III with the Department of Planning and Zoning. Right now, I'm here on behalf of the Employee Recognition Committee, and we would like to now present the Pride and Quality Award. This prestigious award acknowledges exemplary job performance that's resulting in greater efficiencies or extraordinary, broad-reaching public service. It is a true honor to introduce Victoria Bosher, aka Tori, the Recreation Coordinator for the Central District of Department of Parks and Recreation. Welcome back.
It's like costume change, so you can see the difference.
So now that she's front and center, we'll talk a little bit about why we're here today. At the beginning of two thousand and twenty-three, Parks and Rec was awarded a grant through the National Recreation and Parks Association, or the NRPA, because I have to say that over and over again. So she was awarded a grant through the NRPA, which allowed the department to implement a program called Active Living Every Day. Tori was approached to lead the program, a challenge that she eagerly accepted. Tori, along with her assistant coordinator, enthusiastically participated in required monthly meeting progress calls, during which the NRPA leadership noted Tori's willingness to share our local experiences with the grantees, as well as Calvert County Parks and Rec's commitment to creating a diverse, equitable, and inclusive program through this grant. Tori's passion and desire to get the program off the ground did not go unnoticed. She was then asked to lead a monthly session with grantees and the NRPA. She spoke candidly of her personal and professional experiences with the group. Her presentation was well-received and made a very positive impression. In May, the NRPA reached out to award Calvert County Parks and Recs a $2,000 grant for Tori to serve as a peer facilitator at the two thousand and twenty-three National Recreation and Parks Association National Conference in Dallas, Texas. This grant was awarded solely on the merit of Tori's leadership and outstanding participation in the Healthy Aging Grant Program. Tori has just returned from this conference, where she represented Calvert County Parks and Recs, presenting an education session called Aging Unbound: Innovative Strategies Through Parks and Recreation. She shared Calvert County's approach to this topic with professionals from around the world. Tori is the ultimate team player and always willing to go above and beyond to assist her coworkers and citizens alike. She consistently receives positive feedback from her interactions with our citizens. I will add that I had the pleasure of working with Tori in her previous position in the Office of Inspections and Permits. She has always been and clearly remains committed to serving our citizens to the best of her ability, although I'm willing to bet that she has a lot more fun in her current position doing that. It is my honor to join the ERC in recognizing one of Calvert County's rising stars, and as always, thank you, Commissioners, for your continued support of the Employee Recognition Committee, and thank you, Tori, for always going above and beyond and being a true example of exceptional public service within our community. And I'm sure there are more people that would like to come on.
Morning, Commissioner. Staff Nate Smith, Recreation Division Chief. Also am her supervisor, and I want to tell you, every day is a pleasure to work with her. Tori brings an energy, just a positiveness every day with her. If she's late for work, I would know because you can hear her when she comes in the building ahead. And my door is shut and I'm on the opposite end, but you know when she's there every day. And, you know, I believe, you know, Tori's worked in several departments, and I know for a fact that she's found her calling as a Parks and Recreation professional. Shannon got to spend the week with her last week. I'm sure that she's got stories for you as well. You know, she went and presented in Dallas at our national conference, and when I was her age, I'd probably be scared to death of that. And I think you guys know, Tori, there's nothing she's afraid of, and she'll speak to anybody. She wears her heart on her sleeve, and we're just lucky to have her as a department. So, you know, I congratulate her. The department congratulates her, and the rec team, I think we got a few folks back here, we're lucky to work with her. So congratulations again.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to say, from the ERC perspective, we are so lucky to have Tori on our team. She really is a polished professional while representing Calvert County Government, and she proactively volunteers and brings energy to get projects done and make the whole workload that ERC does lighter, easier, and more enjoyable. So thank you so much, Tori. You definitely deserve this award.
I'll say just a few things. Oh, actually, I'll let my Director, Shannon Nizall, speak, and then I'll say a few things. As you should, no. Shannon Nizall, Director of Parks and Recreation. It's hard to get a word in with Tori. I mean, she's, you know, she's always... No, Tori is wonderful. As Nate mentioned, I did spend last week with her at Dallas at the National Recreation and Parks Association Conference. I was very excited for her presentation and very proud of her. There was over nine thousand, ten thousand professionals at this conference.
There was over 9,000, 10,000 professionals, um, at this conference, and she spoke to a full, basically sold-out room, um, full session of professionals on this topic. Um, and when she told me that she was going to speak for only 15 minutes, I didn't believe her. Um, and it ended up being over 30. But it was, it was really good. She gave a lot of perspective, um, and represented Calvert County well. And, um, I couldn't be more proud to have her on our team. She's a rising professional. Um, she'll have my job one day. Um, and, uh, she's definitely very well-deserving of this award, and I'm so proud of you, how far you've come, and how far you have to go. Thank you. All right. So, very quickly, I know, um, I have a tendency to run long, Shannon. Um, but I, I do want to thank everybody that has supported me, my coworkers, my department, my family, my friends, without everybody consistently just speaking, uh, validation and praise into me and letting me know that I'm on the right track. I don't know that I would be in this position. And thank you to all of you on the Board of County Commissioners, County Administrator, uh, County Attorney, Katie, uh, Clerk of the, um, County Administrators. Uh, speaking in front of you all, uh, as much as I have, has given me such experience to be able to speak on a national platform. So, whether you know it or not, you all are part of this as well. So, thank you to everybody involved. And a big thank you to also my Assistant Brian Lusby and Sports Assistant Taylor Morton. Those two were very pivotal in this grant program. So, without them, I definitely would not be able to be up here receiving this. And they unfortunately are not able to be here. Brian is holding down the fort, running a program, and Taylor is, um, out of the office at the moment. But again, thank you to everybody, and this, this is definitely very meaningful to me. So, thank you.
It's always hot, Dennis. So, that brings us to consent. We only have one item under consent today. Department of Planning and Zoning, Maryland Department of Emergency Management Sub-Award Agreement. Is there any objection to the item presented under consent today?
None.
Nope. Hearing none, that item will be adopted as presented. That brings us to a work session, Department of Human Resources Personnel Chapter 86, Code Amendments, Part II, Human Resources Administration. Director, good morning. Deputy Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Melanie Woodson, the Human Resources Director, and...
Good morning, Deana Davis, Human Resources Deputy Director.
So, today, we are here to do our second work session regarding the changes to the Personnel Section of the County Code. And I will start by reading the memo. Background. The Department of Human Resources is moving forward with a comprehensive review of the Personnel Chapter 86 of the County Code. Our goal for this review is to simplify, de-conflict, update, and render best practices to our existing personnel policies. Significant update, updates to Chapter 86 were adapted in 2006, 2009, and 2017, with amendments proposed and adopted as necessary in the interview, intervening years. Work sessions with the Board of County Commissioners will be held regularly to review the proposed amendments. Discussion. Today's work session will include a presentation to summarize the significant changes proposed to Part II, Human Resources Administration. In Attachment A, deletions are indicated by red strikeouts and additions by blue underlines. Attachment B is a clean copy of the proposed amendments. Fiscal impact, none. Conclusion recommendation, the Department of Human Resources requests that the Board of County Commissioners review, and if deemed appropriate, discuss the proposed amendments to Part II of the Human Resources Administration.
Commissioners, I will walk through this slide presentation with you.
Can I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but could I just, um, ask one question, please? I read through the document. I really liked the changes that you all made. I, it was really a great job. But on page five, I had a problem with one thing. Down in Testing, 304 Testing, Employees or Applicants for Positions and Programs for Children or Special Populations, or as otherwise determined by the hu, by Human Resources, may be required to submit to a criminal, criminal background investigation. Um, I, I had a problem with the fact that it's may be required. Shouldn't we have criminal backgrounds for anybody we bring on board that deals with children and special populations, or is that a talk for another day?
We do, and that's a good catch. We certainly can just make that will be, because that is, it, it's a will. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a reminder, some background for you. Um, the county's personnel policies are found in the Code of Calvert County. We are completing a comprehensive review of Personnel Chapter 86 of the Code. And as Melanie stated, our objectives are to simplify, de-conflict, update, and render best pras, practices, our personnel policies. The code amendment process begins when HR drafts Chapter 86 amendments. Proposed amendments are shared with all of Calvert County Government Department Heads for their feedback. Then we hold a work session with the Board of County Commissioners for additional feedback and direction from the Board. Proposed amendments will be then be sent to the County Attorney's Office for legal review. Reschedule a public hearing, and the Board will vote after 10 days, after which the amended Chapter 86 will be adopted. We last came here on August 8th to discuss Part I of Chapter 86, and today, we are here discussing Part II, Personnel Administration. Article I of our proposed amendments includes, includes a revised title from Personnel Administration to Human Resource Administration. New language, language that we've added will require classifica, reclassification requests to follow Board prescribed procedures. And we added a new section called Personnel Changes, related to position changes within a department. Article II is Employee Records. Here, we've revised the title of Article II from Personnel Files to Employee Records. And changes to this section are related to the way we now manage employee documents. We no longer have paper files. Everything is electronic. We use either Workday or Human Resource Information System, or the county's document management system called CORE. Article III, Employee Selection Procedures. Here, we've revised the title of Article III from Personnel Selection Procedures to Employee Selection Procedures. We've removed a redundant nondiscrimination policy. You may recall that when we sat before you last time, we did have the EEO policy in Part I introduction. We felt it was redundant here, and we have removed it. The revisions in this section reference the Hiring Managers Reference Manager, excuse me, Hiring Managers Reference Manual, which is a standalone manual we use for hiring practices. And something new this year, um, that we're adding is references will not be required for seasonal positions. This is specific feedback that we received from a department head, and we have incorporated it into our changes. Just a note here, um, future changes, this is an evolving document, so as, um, we discuss things with staff, um, we've had a request from our team to change the term employment verification, excuse me, instead of using references, we're going to be using employment verification. So, just a note to you that we're always keeping changes under consideration. That will be in our final copy, uh, when we bring that to the Board during a future public hearing. Continuing with changes to Article III, uh, we removed some procedures that we no longer follow. For example, uh, rejection of an applicant for declining interviews or offers. We don't track that, uh, so we removed it altogether. Removed language referencing announcing positions to the public. All of our positions are available for in-house candidates or the public. We've added, uh, return to s, county service requires a 30-day waiting period, um, after separations for purposes of leave and retirement benefits. And then we've added a new section regarding onboarding and orientation of new hires. Article IV is probationary status. We've made some minor language edits here, removing, uh, orientation from this article, and removed overview language from other sections in this article. Um, new here is that we're proposing that part-time employees shall serve a probation period. They currently do not. Also new, employees el, would be eligible, um, for, to request the use of leave benefits during their initial probation. This was a recommendation from several department heads to be able to use annual leave and personal leave upon hire. Currently, annual leave accrues during that initial probation period, but employees cannot request the use of it until they successfully complete that initial probation period. Personal leave is not granted until, um, it is, uh, the probation period is completed for those new hires as well. So, this change would allow employees to accrue annual leave upon hire and request its use, and then would be granted personal leave upon hire.
And that probation period is?
Six months. And, um, I know that there have been some questions about our probation period in the past. We did poll our counterparts in other counties in Maryland, and six months is standard.
What did the consultant say?
Um, I, I honestly can't recall. I would have to go back and look at it.
The consultant didn't recommend any changes to the probationary period for us.
Okay, so, going back to the red deletions and the blue underline, or is that what the consultant wrote, all those changes, or is that something that you guys did?
That is comparing our, um, current county code with our proposed changes. So, when we visited you last time, we had already, we were already 75% through this change, so we don't have a document that shows what, um, our changes were versus the consultant. We will have that for you when we get to Part III.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, and I just wanted to mention that COVID brought to light the importance of having leave for employees upon hire and allowing them to use it. And finally here, um, employees eligible for leave benefits shall be granted, oh, sorry, I'm, I said the same thing over. Next slide. Um, this is Article V, Changes in Employee Status. Uh, here, we added involuntary demotion within a non-competitive promotional series. Currently, the county does provide for involuntary demotion. Typically, that is at the request of the department head due to performance or disciplinary issues, but it's only in a ranked series. Um, we do have several positions now throughout the county that are, uh, non-competitive promotions. Typically, an employee would have to meet certain years of service and, uh, minimum requirements in order to be eligible for a non-competitive promotion. This just allows a department head to move someone back if there is, uh, a performance or disciplinary issue.
And what's the salary change?
So, for a demotion, currently, it is 6%. That's in our next section. We've been working on that. So, we'll, we'll come to you soon.
Next one?
Yeah. Continuing with Article V, uh, we renamed the Disability Section to Fitness for Duty. We have had issues with the current language because it requires that the county contract with a physician to do a fitness for duty examination. And we've found that many physicians are not willing to do this. There are liability issues, um, so we have sent employees far away. In order to do these, we don't have a local source any longer. Um, so, the proposes, that proposed change that we're, um, requesting here would be to allow the department head to request a fitness for duty examination that would be done by the employee's own healthcare provider. We would be following the Americans with Disabilities Act, um, and the fitness for duty examination would be initiated by the department head due to a medical condition or safety concern. Again, the employee would be required to provide documentation from their own healthcare provider. The department head may continue to request an independent exam paid for by the county. And, um, as a result of a fitness for duty, the county would explore reasonable accommodations, again, in line with the Americans with Disabilities Act, um, and these may include leave and reassignment.
So, I know we've had some issues in the past with employees, and their personal doctors are reluctant to determine them unfit for duty.
So, we would be developing a series of questions, a questionnaire for that doctor to complete. Um, and again, if the results of that, um, examination are unsatisfactory to the department head, they could request that HR locate an independent doctor to complete another examination.
Well, just in light of our experience, it appears that an independent doctor would be better at doing those evaluations, because, as I said, personal physicians have relationships, and sometimes they're reluctant. And it just looks like that's sometimes not the best avenue for determining fitness.
Understood. I think that we have made this change based on the struggles that we've had with an independent doctor. Uh, I'm not sure that there is a perfect solution here, but, um, we'll certainly keep it under advisement.
Because what's your change? I don't see much change here.
It doesn't require that we send them to an independent doctor. Right now, someone has to go to an independent doctor that we, um, we contract with.
Well, I thought their, their issue in the past has been that they're not going to independent doctors. They're going to their own doctors, and their own doctors are saying that they are fit for duty when we don't believe that they really are.
I'm, I'm not sure that I'm specific.
Director?
So, Commissioner Hans, I, I believe that you are thinking of a very specific instance. And yes, there are some employees who do have personal relationships with their doctors in which it appears as though the doctor will allow the employee to be...
To be very lenient.
Correct. Um, so, that is not what happens the majority of the time, but I think when those instances arise, that's when it arrives to the level that you all are made aware of the situation. So, in most instances, um, the doctor is not a barrier, the personal doctor is not a barrier to the county being able to achieve its goals of having an employee fit for duty, because that's ultimately what we're trying to do here, is just make sure that these employees are safe and fit to work. Um, it is not frequent that an employee would be not fit for duty and would want their doctor to continue to allow them to work.
I'm sure it's a rare occasion, but I think the instance that I'm thinking of, we were very concerned about the safety of not just the employee, but citizens because of the type of work he was doing. And I thought at that time, I was told, we couldn't force him to go to another doctor. And I just want to make sure that if we're fixing this, that we fix it.
People vibrate yourself into that box, because it could be that exact situation. Whereas, most of the time, in my experience, previous to this, we used, um, a contracted or, or, or... a contracted or third party to be able to make that evaluation and do that. Whereas this is going directly the opposite, correct?
Yes.
So vibrate yourself into it either way. Keep it general.
Or if we allow them to go to their personal doctor and we did have concerns, we have the ability to require them to go to a contracted.
And we do.
And that is what we stated. That is what we're stating in the change, yes.
Okay. Well, I just want to be clear.
But I hear you and it sounds like we definitely, definitely need to make sure that we revisit this before we go to public hearings. So we'll make sure to bring this one back to you.
Thank you.
Because, you know, it's, you know, it's not, as I say, it's not just about the employee's safety. It's, we have employees out on the road every day and I personally was serious concerned about this individual and his ability to perform safely. And, you know, we just want to make sure if we're going through this, that we make sure we address.
So what will happen when his doctor says he can work and the independent doctor says he can't work, which is not fit for duty? Where do we stand at that point?
We would follow the Americans with Disabilities Act. So if we learn that an employee is not fit for duty, then we would go into the reasonable accommodation process with them.
But if your question is whose doctor will prevail, the county's doctor will prevail.
Okay, and then just so that...
So at the end of the day, our doctor trumps their personal doctor.
Yes.
I just wanted to say something. In another life, we encountered this in government. And what had to be done in certain instances, because doctors don't want to get involved in some cases, employees, their health records are their health records. And we allowed them to submit health records which showed a trail of appointments and how they were being treated. And HR used that to, to have accommodations for the employee. So I've seen it done.
Okay, thank you.
And are we, maybe this is in the right place, but are we going to talk about driving records at some point in time?
Acceptable driving records?
That's in the safety manual. It's not in the county code.
And I don't want to talk about the specific case too much, but I don't want to get locked up, but...
So, I mean, so it's not anywhere in the county code for employment?
It is not.
In hiring process or anything?
It is not. If the employee is required to drive a county vehicle, that is one of the steps the recruitment team takes to review their, or the risk management team takes to review their driving record. But it is not spelled out in the code, no.
But what does the safety code say about accidents? And when we can revoke an employee's ability to drive?
We can always revoke an employee's ability to drive.
Can we do that on both CDL side and regulars?
Well, CDL is covered.
Right.
Well, you don't have, we're about CDL. It's the people that drive just regular vehicles. And I don't want the attorney's eyes to twitch, so I better stop it.
Is that Chapter Thirty-Six as well?
Safety manual.
You addressed that in the safety manual in 2021 or 2022.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I hope we did a good job.
You did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners, if I may, Mark was kind of mentioning, one of the issues here is that we're really talking about when they review an employee's driving record before we hire them. That's something that they would look at for sure. But I think what you may be referring to is that once an employee is hired and is working and they have issues with their driver's license, and that is where the safety manual comes in and I think picks up that other part of it. So they're tied together at the hip and they do work together. The problem is, is that if someone is required to drive a vehicle and cannot, then we have to do, we have to take that action to, so that we know that job position is fully active and responsible for their work. So it does take a little bit longer, but we, we do what is necessary.
I'm going to stop.
We appreciate your feedback. Article Six, Separations from Employment. We removed the department head option to restore employee to position for abandoned men. We established furlough and layoff criteria to include priority to continue employment for those approaching retirement. Merit in part-time furloughs or layoffs based on performance ratings, then seniority, and 30 days notice to employee to include reason and effective date when there is a furlough or layoff. Continuing with Article Six, we added the definition of furlough.
Can I back up for a minute?
Sure.
Back to furlough and layoff? So we have to give 30-day notice before we can terminate an employee, or that's only for...
Layoff and furlough only.
So a layoff and a termination are different?
Correct. Yes.
You mean like economic circumstances and we had to furlough somebody opposed to somebody violated the rules and had to be terminated?
Exactly. So the, the need for, we've, we've always had layoffs in the code. We don't use them very often. It might be if a grant fund is eliminated, for example, someone's position might be laid off. Furlough, the need for furlough came up during COVID. We had all of these employees. Our work obviously was a little bit different. So we did need to keep those employees on because we didn't have a furlough option. So in the future, we would have an option to furlough. I don't anticipate that we're going to use furlough or layoff often, but we did spell it out in our amendments here.
Thank you.
And we defined furlough as a required temporary leave of absence without pay from which the employee is expected to return to work. Another change we've made here in this section is temporary hourly and seasonal employees are no longer excluded from the exit interview process. And we've removed withholding the value of county property or money owed to the county from the final paycheck. Article Seven is the nepotism policy. We renamed this section from employment of relatives to nepotism policy. The revised policy only excludes defined relatives of elected officials. Upon the code amendment effective date, no individual shall be hired where defined relatives are in the same management chain. And we're maintaining the grandfather clause for those employed prior to October 1st, 1989. Something new is the dating or marriage of two employees must be reported in writing. Final article of Part Two is Article Eight, Executive Leadership. Here we renamed this section from department heads to executive leadership. We added contract positions of county administrator, deputy county administrator, deputy director, and division chief. Currently, all of these positions are being filled as contract positions through attrition. We do have three merit division chief positions that remain. If you recall in Part One, there was a definition section. So as we worked through Part Two, we've added several definitions to Part One. One is the ADA, related to Americans with Disabilities Act, disability and fitness for duty. All of these definitions are related to the fitness for duty section that we talked about a moment ago. Also added will be management chain and reorganization. As I stated earlier, we did share this, these amendments with department heads and we did incorporate some of their changes, but there were several others that we did not incorporate into our amendments. And these are reclassifications. We had a request to make reclassification requests effective immediately. Our current process, when we do hold a reclassification cycle, is to make them effective at the beginning of the fiscal year. So typically in the past, we've announced a reclassification in August and usually everything is finalized by March or April in time for the budget. So those numbers would be placed into the budget. Reclassifications, if any, are approved for employees would be effective July 1st with the new fiscal year budget. We also had a recommendation from a department head to waive reference verification requirement if no response received after five business days. This is really just an issue that we have when an applicant does not respond to recruitment's many requests to return a call, email, or text.
That's, that's for the person who has, is applying for the job?
Yes, yes. We had a request to be able to decline an applicant if a disqualifying offense on the background check comes up. These are the fingerprint results. Another request was to, for returning employees, those employees that have a break in service, consider not treating them as completely new for purposes of leave or years of service.
So you would not put them on probation?
I don't know the answer to that. I think in particular, this department had may have been talking about leave. So for example, someone is here for five years, they might accrue annual leave at a higher rate than a new hire. So one of the things that they were asking was that they would come back and still be able to accrue leave at that higher rate. I might have to go back to my notes. I don't think it had to do with probation. And the final request was to require probation period for employees recalled to work. This is for layoffs.
So if we lay somebody off and we call them back to work, they have to go on probation?
They do not.
These are the recommendations from the department heads that we did not incorporate into our recommendations to you.
Oh, okay. I thought it was the other way around.
No, no, we did not incorporate any of these. We just wanted to let you know what our colleagues have requested for your consideration because we just didn't want to write it all all together if there was something that you were interested in.
We thought it was the opposite. Sorry.
So Mel, did we fix the policy? It used to be with temp employees, speaking of that reminded me, it was like six months or a year. If they've been in our system, they had to kind of go back and apply all over again. Did we, did we fix that? I know it was years ago, when you said that.
So you mean like if a seasonal employee works this summer and then he comes back next summer?
That was okay, but they couldn't, they couldn't apply for an in-house job because they've been separated from us for like six months or so.
So we don't do in-house postings at all anymore? All of our postings are to the public? So I don't know if someone from the recruitment team...
I remember that years ago. I remember, I don't want to bring up the position just to spotlight the person, but I remember, just, that just jogged my memory that the seasonal employees were kind of locked out of applying because, but you said, I guess, well, you said there is no more in-house, so I guess that fixes that then. So I'm sorry. I'm sorry, just...
Okay.
That's the end of our presentation. Any other questions or comments for us?
Nope.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's going to be a long process.
It is.
Because there's 10 more parts.
Yes.
It's going to be a year before we get this done.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're trying to put the jets on. Hopefully, we can...
Do two a month?
Some of them a little bit closer together. But it sounds like we're going to have to bring some of these back to you again, so...
But it's much more consolidated, which is a good thing.
Yes. We want to get it right. Yep, we do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to public comment.
Thank you, sir. The board adopted a resolution in 1989 intending to maintain the ordering accord with the governmental process. A copy is found here to my right. Also, Resolution 51-20, persons are welcome to address the Board of County Commissioners on any matter germane to the business of county government. Persons addressing the board shall refrain from making statements, remarks, or conduct that is uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane, or otherwise disruptive to the conduct of the board's business. All speakers are asked to identify themselves and whether speaking as an individual, you'd be allocated two minutes, or speaking as the designated representative of a group, you'd be allocated five. There is no one attending virtually, so if there's anyone in the room, please make your way to the microphone. Of course, the Ethics Commission has asked us that we remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy. And lobbyists are required to register in advance.
Good afternoon. I'm Ira Gowan and I'm speaking for Calvert Citizens Genai. This evening, you all are going to be presented with a proposal for a bill. And Delegate Mark Fisher is presenting that. I want to share with you the background of this bill, of how it got here and how we got into this perplexing dilemma.
We invited you to speak this evening. Delegate Fisher's not going to be presenting it, so you will be at the table tonight.
Oh, okay. Well, that's fine too. Thank you. All right. So at any rate, what I wanted to tell you is this. This is how Kenwood and Sugarloaf, two state laws that have been passed by our legislature, came into being in 1988, '87, '88. William Donald Schaefer was governor. And he had a problem with Pepco, the utility company. They wanted, they needed to build a whole new station and they found land up in Montgomery County. And what ended up happening is Governor Schaefer called the most important president we've ever had in the state senate. And there were four people in the meeting. And what was, what was determined is that an accommodation, the governor promised an accommodation to Pepco. There were eight people involved in this. And what ended up happening is that that backroom deal, that ability to make a law to protect, to do something for, for Governor Schaefer through the legislature, and the legislator president was the brilliant one who put it all together. That became Sugarloaf and Sugarloaf became state law. Now, it was put together very quickly. There was a lawsuit. It was a long litigation. And what ended up happening is that the county council approved it, this legislation, on behalf of the governor. And what then, what happened is the citizens found out that one of the councilmen owns stock in Pepco. Not a big block of stock, just stock. That's where the lawsuit came. And that's how we got Sugarloaf. Sugarloaf is if you are a legislator who is elected, you must vote based on Sugarloaf. Sugarloaf is state law. You must vote. You cannot recuse yourself. Now, the second thing that happened is that, fast forward a few years, another project was Mammoth. A lot of Wall Street money involved in that project. They went back to the drawing board and they tightened up Sugarloaf with Kenwood. Kenwood was Baltimore city property. Kenwood was huge. And what ended up happening is the same, six of the same eight original people that were involved in the backroom deal to do Kenwood, they in turn tightened it up, the language. So what ends up happening is that you have a code of ethics and you've got Kenwood and Sugarloaf, right? The code of ethics says you have to recuse yourself if, if you're self-enriching yourself from a vote. That's what you're supposed to do under the code of ethics, state and county, or even the appearance of a conflict of interest. What has happened from this backroom meeting that happened in 1987, '88? What happened therein is that here's your code of ethics. Here's Kenwood and Sugarloaf. They are state law. They're mandated that you are supposed to vote as elected officials. So what they do is here's your state law and here's... So what they do is here's your state law, and here's your code of ethics, which are supposed to come first. These two case laws gobble up your code of ethics. They diminish it. They wipe it out. Now, I just want you to understand this. When all of this happened, what has gone on in our county is a four-year lawsuit. We got into the special court of appeals.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay. The special court of appeals. We went in, I'm gonna finish my statement, but the, you know, the sentence.
Time.
Okay. What happened is we get to the Supreme Court of Maryland. It's the first time they've taken a case that had anything to do with zoning and Sugarloaf and Kenwood. Because they're sacrosanct in the state, because the attorneys and the governor and the president of the senate put it together. And they are enabling, because people make huge sums of money off of it, because it all embodies development. The Supreme Court told us in January of this year, you, we can't help you with Sugarloaf and Kenwood. And John and I, Norris and I, have talked about this, and we're on opposite sides, and I respect his opinion.
But Sister Frances Marion would call that a run-on sentence, so please, please do have a seat. No, ma'am, I'm afraid that we don't, we can't make exceptions just for one person.
Okay. What I want to say is.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay. The Supreme Court said this needs to be done legislatively, and that is where the voters are gonna hold you accountable. Thank you.
And there are no other speakers.
What?
Thank you.
There are no other speakers.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. You already gave us two condolences this morning, but I would add something for Mr. Tommy Brady. He had 61 years of fire service at his passing. Also, we'd like to bring up prayers for the Denton family and the Harrison family. And we had a good Pratt response, even though we had a rainy weekend. Thank you.
Commissioner Irland?
When I was at Pratt, it was definitely raining. I went early, and I'll tell you, I felt bad for a lot of the crafters there, but they stuck it out, and they cleared up that afternoon, and they had beautiful weather. On October 10th, Commissioner Grasso and I attended the election judge appreciation dinner. We presented several proclamations that night to election judges, numerous who had well in excess of 25 years of service to the election board. The Calver County election judges do an outstanding job of making sure that Calver County's elections maintain their integrity, and just want to thank them for doing what they do.
Commissioner Grasso?
We had a wel, sorry. We had a welcome home to our World War II vets, Korean veterans, and Vietnam veterans. It was held at Dunkirk Park. I can't remember the youngest. I think it was about 68, but the oldest individual there was 106 in age. And it was absolutely wonderful. It was wonderful. And Shannon, I want to publicly thank John. John saved me. You know what John did at the park. Great guy. We had a really nice conversation en route and coming back. First Friday, the last first Friday in North Beach was held October 6. I did attend the Pratt event in Solomons, and the sun was out when I was there. I ran into Commissioner Cox and his family. It was very nice. I learned, the Jefferson Patterson Park exhibit, I learned a few new things, and on my way home, I called my husband who was fishing and told him what I had learned. It was fascinating, but I won't go into it. Okay, and also with Commissioner Ireland, I attended the election judges appreciation night. It was very nice. Election judges are so critical to our First Amendment right, and the longest serving was 38 years. And I have to say, the Board of Elections, as long as I've been involved with them, they are above reproach. So I thank everybody who serves in the Board of Elections, who makes every vote count for every citizen in Calver County.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Just want to thank the folks again for making sure we had Pratt, you know, challenging weather, but it's important that its tradition lives on, and that's all I have.
Thank you. So last Friday, the 13th, the grain elevator located up at the county line reopened. For a lot of people, that's not very important. If you're a farmer in Southern Maryland, that's very important. That facility had been on the market for sale because the current owners were gonna close it, and they couldn't find a buyer. And I have to thank Senator Bailey and Senator Alfred, who secured state funding and purchased the facility. And Anaronda County government has taken ownership of that facility and did not take ownership until June, and there have been some comments in the farm community about how long it was taken and different things. But I just want to remind everybody that in county government, as my new commissioners will attest to, county government doesn't move very fast. And for Anaronda County government to take ownership of that in June and have it open last Friday is pretty significant for government. And I know farmers were concerned about they were being left out of the loop, but there also are rules and regulations that government has to follow, and a lot of information just couldn't be shared. I think we were all very optimistic that it was gonna be open this fall. It's just a process that you have to go through. So just very happy to see that facility open. The farm in Southern Maryland is getting very difficult. We're a shrinking business industry, and we don't have support services. Most major farm equipment dealers are two hours away. There are only two grain facilities in Southern Maryland, and if that one had closed, that would have meant only one, which is very antiquated and very small in Charles County. So it is significant that that facility is open. So I want to, again, thank those two senators for their efforts to make sure that that remained open and hope that they are successful. Also, on Saturday night, I attended my 50th class reunion. Yes, only 50. It was, it was a lot of fun. I hadn't seen a lot of my friends for 50 years. So those of you in school, you have all these friends, you think you're gonna be friends forever, and once you graduate, your life changes. And some of my really good friends I had not seen since graduation day over 50 years ago.
How many people did you have?
There was 140, no, 126 class members. There was 144 people there, 126 class members.
Really? That's impressive.
That was just one year?
Yes.
That is impressive.
So, and here's the, okay. This is gonna get lengthy now. My class was very unique in Calver County. It was the last full graduating class when we only had one high school, Calver High School. It was the first integrated class, and in sixth grade, they integrated all the white and black children together at what was Brooks High School, and all the sixth graders in the county went to that school. That was the first integrated class in this county. In ninth grade, where our schools were so full because we couldn't afford to build anymore, I only went to school a half a day, because all the ninth graders, the south end of the county went to school until lunchtime, and the north county went only in the afternoon.
I did not know that.
Because they didn't have room for everybody. So that's my excuse.
I know your dad loved that. He could work you at that.
Absolutely. I kind of liked it myself. But we were special. You know, they experimented on us a lot, and things have changed a lot, but it was really good seeing my classmates and. Some of them have changed, and some of us haven't, but.
Some are probably old, aren't they?
Some of them, yes, really old.
Do the name badges help dramatically, or were you okay?
Yeah, they did. They took pictures, they took our class pictures.
Oh, no worries.
Your senior class pictures, they put on your name badge with your name. Because a lot of them, you know, I sort of recognized that some of them I did not. We had three pastors in our class. We've lost, I counted, 65 or 70 members have died. A lot of them in the last three or four years, which is not a good sign, but it was really cool and.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Because, look, those of you who live in Calver County, I have all these high schools, and we have all these people, you don't have the relationship that we had, because every child in this county went to the same school. So you knew everybody from Solomons to Dunkirk. We all got to be friends. Now we have kids in this county that never meet anybody, you know, five miles north of where they live, because they're, you know, in their own little schools. So it was a great place here in Calver County. So I had a really good time, and hopefully I'll be there for the 60th and get to see some of my friends again. So with that, two reminders tonight, this afternoon, the county election board is having a public meeting, 4 o'clock, at the Southern Community Center to talk about a change in precincts. And just a little backup on that. What we've noticed in the last several elections, as most of you, we have a lot, now you can early vote for nine days. A lot of people early vote. Mail-ins, mail-ins are way up. More than half the people, I believe, in the last election voted early or by mail. So we see less people on election day, and we have 26, I think we still have 26 precincts in this county. So what the election board has proposed that they're holding public meetings on is reducing those precincts, especially in Lusby. There are five voting precincts in Lusby.
Right across the street from each other.
And at the Southern Community Center, there's one right across the street from the other. And Gail Hatfield, who's the county election administrator, is struggling to get judges. You know, we just talked about how, what a great group of judges we have, but it's getting harder and harder to find people to be induction judges and work on election day. And what she's proposed is reducing some of those precincts, and in those places where it makes sense, which is two places in Lusby especially. So if you have interest in that, there are some people that have some concerns. They're taking public comment until October 27th, and you can watch online or show up in person today at 4 o'clock at the Southern Community Center. And also tonight at 7 o'clock, we'll be at the Harriet Brown Center, talking about proposed legislation for the upcoming legislative session, which you just heard some of in public comment. And you can, will be allowed to make comment at that time also. So those are the two meetings we have going on today that could be of interest to you. I think that concludes everything I have. Mr. Hart, if you have a motion for me?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to general provisions, Articles, Sections 3-305B8 and 3-305B10, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation, and discuss public security because the board finds that public discussion would constitute a risk to public or public security.
Second?
I have a motion. The second that we go into executive session, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Everyone have a great day.
Thank you.